Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the meeting to order. School Committee Business Meeting for Monday, May 16th at 6:31 PM. Mrs. Kennedy, can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mayor Riden's going to be late. Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
Mr. Menon?
Here.
Ms. Spaulding is absent. Mr. Cole?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Okay, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have anyone in attendance for public comment?
Do we have anyone in attendance?
No. I thought you saw someone walk in. Well, consent agenda. Mr. Callahan, are you ready for warrants?
I am ready. There were two warrants. I move the following named bills to Newburyport Public Schools. I imagine in aggregate $768,878.83 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. We have two sets of minutes this evening. The first is from April 26th. That was our meeting at the high school. Any corrections to those minutes? And Mr. Menon, you are not in attendance, right? So you'll be abstaining. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the April 26th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My abstention.
Great. All right, the next set is from the May 2nd meeting. All were present. Any corrections to those minutes? All right then, can I get a motion to approve the May 2nd minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it's time for our NHS Student Representative Report.
Okay, so starting off at the high school. So the high school has two weeks left with our seniors. And last Wednesday night was the academic key ceremony. And we bid congratulations to all of our key recipients. We would also like to commend Emma Lowe, who was the valedictorian, Mia Yim, the salutatorian, and Jack Felner, the Bresnahan Scholar-Athlete, on delivering impactful speeches at the ceremony. And additionally, Graham Smith, Abhi Patel, and Charlie Grossman gave thoughtful introductions to each speaker. Alongside the above, we want to recognize Nathan Berry, Tyler Coles, Hannah Cronin, Ryan Edwards, Emma Lowe, Abhi Par, Campbell Pierce, Molly Webster, and Mia Yim, who were part of the North Shore Honors Scholars Dinner last Thursday. Finally, thank you to Brooke Lee for playing the piano during the ceremony. On Wednesday, May 25th, NHS will hold its annual scholarships award night. And this Tuesday and Wednesday, grade 10 students will take the math MCAS and the freshman class will participate in a bio blitz to prepare for the biology MCAS in a few weeks. The Interact Club is at it again. They recently collaborated with the Bresnahan Elementary to run a very successful clothing drive. And we are very appreciative of all the service that the Interact Club does for us. They currently have 150 students registered. And it's a great way for students to get involved in the community and make friends while doing service. The Student Council is supporting a drive for personal care items to benefit community service of Newburyport beginning May 11th and running through May 20th. Last week's peer NHS mentors and newcomers to Newburyport participated in a picnic at Cashman Park. And this program has been a great way for new students to integrate into the community and build connections. So thank you to all the students who were involved. On Tuesday, May 24th, the junior class will participate in the Credit for Life Fair sponsored by the Institutions for Savings. This is an interactive event that prepares students to survive financially in the everyday world before they get to leave high school. Students choose professions and assume the roles of 25-year-old professionals with paychecks. They use their monthly salaries, credit cards, and savings accounts to purchase everything they will need to live as adults. The goal of this day is to balance their budget and not to overspend. This event is organized by the bank, and we are extremely appreciative that our students get this chance. And this experience coincides really well with the financial math class that students can opt to take in their high school. So updates from the athletics department. Baseball is 12-3, and they're first place in the Cal. Boys lacrosse is 9-5, and they are also first place in the Cal. Girls lacrosse is 12-1, and they are the Cal champions, as well as first place in the state divisions. Softball is 7-7. Boys tennis is 3-4. Girls tennis is 11-1, and they are first place in the Cal, as well as in the state divisions. Boys spring track is 7-0, and they are the Cal champions. And girls' spring track is 4-3, and there are two weeks left in the regular season.
So from the NOC, in conjunction with the NHS seniors, NOC students participated in an escape room capstone project, and it was a huge success. The project allowed grade 8 students to work collaboratively and problem solve. The high school students who organized it were a part of the Perspectives for Leadership and Change course. Their objective was to give grade 8 students an experience to build connections with each other. And from the Mullen, Mullen 4th graders had their STEM showcase on Friday. The Mullen team was very excited to bring the STEM showcase back to the 4th graders' projects were amazing. Projects ranged from building hydraulic claw to creating marble run to coding a robot. The students impressed us with their ability to explain their hypothesis, procedure, observations, and outcome. The 5th grade STEM showcase is coming in June. And from the Bresnahan, students experienced the magic of our artist and resident Kim Suley by working with Zen Tangles in art class. Zen Tangle is a method for drawing which not only promotes concentration and creativity, but at the same time increases personal well-being. We are so grateful for the NEF for providing this partnership. Pre-K and K students who visited with Curious Creatures this week. Curious Creatures is a program that provides hands-on, interactive education, teaching, respect, and appreciation for exotic and unusual animals. The kindergarten team will continue learning about animals and the environment by visiting the Seacoast Science Center tomorrow. The 1st graders are exploring how literacy and science connect. They planted wildflower seeds and are journaling the growth of their plants. They are also writing essays about spring and describing their favorite parts of the season. 2nd graders just wrapped up a math module that covered a number of different topics: graphing, money, and measurement. The students reported liking this module because it feels more useful in the real world. 3rd graders in STEM are using the engineering process to turn recycled materials into new inventions. Teachers have been continuing their work on the literacy curriculum, wrapping up a year of professional development, in my view, and foundations. This past Friday, a group of teachers participated in a training that will prepare the school to roll out the new strategies-based and language-based classrooms. The whole school is excited for the Waterfront Festival on May 21st, the STEM Expo on May 26th, and the Field Day on June 3rd.
Thank you. Lots going on. All right, Superintendent, time for the strategic plan report.
All right. I want to thank you all very much. I'm wearing a mask. I'm in my COVID protocols. And watching the press conferences with the Celtics basketball coach. He wears a mask, and it brought them a lot of luck. So I figure, hey, why not? So during my superintendent's report, I do have an update on COVID. As we all know, more and more cases are coming, so something that we're monitoring very closely. Well, first of all, here is just a quick overview. It's part of the school committee packet, and also what we've posted on the webpage is a very comprehensive strategic plan report. I just really want to take an opportunity and thank our extended leadership team, along with faculty, support staff, all of the people that participated in the focus groups for their input. Without that and without their guidance, I think this strategic plan would not have come to fruition this year, and I'm just really excited to share it. So my overview is kind of a global overview, but for the details, it's in the report. So as you all know, we've really taken three different areas on our strategic planning. One was the vision, and that's the portrait of a graduate. That's a lot of work that we did in Phase 1. Phase 2 was the strategies, so reimagining our strategic objectives. And then the work that will continue is the tactical cycles. And you'll see how it all ties back to district goals, school improvement plans, and educated So as we took a look at a future-focused planning approach, and this was really stemmed for all of us through the past couple of years, in really dealing with the pandemic, and having the ability to adjust and to adapt and to be flexible within the school system, at the same time worried about safety of our students and staff, but also at the same time moving the district forward. So I think there was a lot of lessons learned through the pandemic. I think one of them, as we said, was the future-focused planning approach. And we've been really talking about Amy Webb's Future Today Institute. And her institute works with many of the Fortune 500 businesses and corporations, and really having this idea of having the ability to adapt your organization to be successful. So we're really taking a look at this, and I think for all of us, is you gain data and evidence as you make progress on your actions. The beginning of the cone is your tactical category. So this is what is really important for schools and for us at Newburyport Public Schools, is we're always on the reset into the present day. So we're constantly adapting and changing on a daily basis to achieve our goals. So as you all know, I just alluded to this, and I've been saying this throughout the process. Part of my entry plan when I first came to Newburyport, and I asked about the development of the strategic plan, there was a lot of stakeholders, I think, within our school community who felt they weren't involved. So I think one of the first pieces for us is how to get as many people involved in this process. So we have over 700 participants in focus groups. Students, staff, parents, guardians, city officials, and any other interested community members in this process. So we really focused, as you all know, on the portrait of a graduate. So the focus groups were asked to identify the skills, the mindsets, and the knowledge that we felt that Newburyport Public School graduates will need to be successful after So we explored, as you all know, looking at trend data, our current trend data, economic data, technology data, demographic, and environmental trends within our society. And as we started to focus on the portrait of a graduate, graduates are prepared with deep content knowledge, healthy habits, diverse skills. And this is what overwhelmingly came out of our focus groups, these big areas, right? And you've seen this before, that our students are physically, socially, emotionally well, that they're literate across all disciplines, that they're creative, innovative, collaborative problem solvers, they're civically engaged, and they're prepared for life after graduation. What is awesome about this work that we did in Newburyport is when you look at some of the skill sets for the World Economic Forum, the top 10 skills that employees need today to be successful. What I really love about this is our work ties directly to this work. If you look under self-management, we just did a presentation, I think, a couple of weeks ago, where we talked about cultural competency work, and then the second piece was social-emotional learning. So the top 10 skills of the employees today, especially in the business world, if you look at that, it's self-management, active learning and learning strategies, and then being resilient, stress tolerant, and flexible. Exactly ties in to our goals of social-emotional learning. The other piece that we felt was pretty great is leadership and social influence. And under the top 10 skills for the Economic Forum, it falls under working with people. So a lot of the work that we've been doing with our students and student advocacy, student voice, really ties into this. And then also even restorative justice approach with discipline, where students can make amends when they make a mistake, come back into the school community, and utilize that as a learning tool. So a lot of the work that we've done, working with our community, ties directly to the top 10 skills that, you know, employees are looking for. So that was a quick little overview on the portrait of a graduate and trying to identify that skill set. The second piece that we did is we took our strategic plan and took a look at those strategies. So the theme was to reimagine for all of us, but really to have continuous learning and a cycle of improvement. As we all know, the hallmarks of effective educational decision-making. So we've taken the seven strategic goals, and we combined them into five identifiable goals to guide us. So our strategic objective analysis, so as part of the focus groups, we really did a SCOG analysis, and we looked at our accomplishments, we looked at our strategies or our challenges, and then we looked at opportunities and goals across all of the former strategic plan initiatives. And when you look at the detailed report, that's all highlighted on pages 17 through 29, and what were the SCOG analysis process and the results from that were. So when we look at the five strategies, you'll see a lot of familiar wording in here, but you'll start to notice a difference in the action planning. So this is just a big overview of really our initiatives for the next five years. So you have the teaching and learning, supports that all students are ready and able to learn, a culture of self-discovery and personal achievement, organizational design and operations, and active community of stakeholders. And as you can see, I won't read through all of these, but you can see, we really highlighted the top 15 that are really going to drive the district for over the next five So our district-level outcomes and investments are outlined in the full report, and that's pages 9 through 11. And then the third area we talked about is the tactical action plans. This is on the ground, in the classroom, in the buildings, within the district. So these plans are identified as specific measurable actions at the district, school, educator level that will take, taking to achieve the portrait of a graduate vision, along with our current strategic objectives. So really, it's taking our tactics and really working from the top level at the district to the school level, to the educators. So what you can see, how this nicely fits in, that everyone's moving in the same direction. So you have the planning, district strategic plans and superintendent goals, the development, working with school committee, and then the reporting out is annual on goals and outcomes reported to the school committee. So going into next year, kind of highlight where we're at, which then those same district strategic goals tie to the school improvement plans, where the principals and the school councils are working on those. And they have those annual updates on the goals and the outcomes that are reported, not only to the school committee, but also to the superintendent. And then really tying our educator goals. So that's the administration, support staff, all moving in the same direction, the development by the educators, and as you all know, utilizing the DESE evaluative process, we have those annual review seen by all of our extended leadership team and the administrators. So as we look at the process and the recommendations, so really, I think, just a big overview is we provided a focus and reduced redundancy in the district plan. I think that was one of the feedbacks we received from the focus group, is there's a lot of great things, but there was a lot of redundancy. And then we reflected in the five reimagined strategies that I just talked about. The second piece that we're excited about is how to align the tactical actions. So all of the district, school improvement, educated goals are aligned to the portrait of a graduate and reimagined strategies. And then the last piece is, this is, I think, the real goal, is to maintain a future-focused planning. Provide the district and community-wide opportunities to develop skills, future-focused thinking and planning. If we go back to those skills that we talked about, content knowledge is always changing. And that's a constant change. You know, even if you look at the study on like DNA and science, in the textbooks five or 10 years ago, there's a lot of advancement in DNA and DNA research that's different than it was five years ago. But those same strategies we talked about is the constant. You know, the innovative problem solving, the use of technology, collaboration, leadership. So that's the skill focus. The other piece that we're really excited about is this work that we've done on our strategic plan. Having Amy Webb and her team, we reached out to them, and they were intrigued. We were the first school district, I think, in the country who actually reached out to them and took a different look at strategic planning. And they're really excited. We sent them our plan, they're reviewing it, and they're going to give us some feedback on that also. So it's pretty exciting and cutting-edge. And I think it's for us to think outside the box on how to strategic plan for schools, but also, I think, learn from our living lesson for the past two years. Dealing with the pandemic, but at the same time moving the district forward, was very challenging, but I think we learned a lot of lessons on how we have to be flexible. And then, as I said, I didn't want to go through the, you know, 50-page report, it's there, but in that, the details for the complete report, you see our vision, strategic objectives and outcomes, tactics, portrait of a graduate, SCOG analysis, and school improvement plans are all in there. And I really like the work that we've done as a school committee. When we talk about budgeting, it's strategic budgeting, it's a strategic budget. So as we move forward with future budgets, you're going to see how all of the asks and the improvements within the schools are going to be tied directly back to the strategic plan. So we're excited about that. That's a brief overview, kind of a bigger picture, and the details are in the full report. I'll stay up here because I'm going to talk about budget next, but if there's any questions, I got my great team back there. Be willing to step up, because I want to credit them for a lot of their work, too. Yes?
Yeah. I have a, you know, it's a process question. It's very intriguing to me, but how do you think that this impacts on the budget process the next time around? How, you know, we kind of patched the budget together this year based on the previous strategic plan and what we thought was going to be in this one? But how do you see that interplay?
Well, I think what we're really looking to do, I think there's a couple of things. I think when we talk about from the district to the school improvement to the educated goals, you're going to see a lot of the asks that are coming out of the school improvement plans are going to be directly tied to the budget. So when we are requesting or phasing in, you know, if it's staffing or if it's technology, I think there won't be a question on why anymore, because it's going to be so transparent from the goals from the district, as I said, to schools, to the principals, to the educators, that the tactical day-to-day piece, people are going to be very familiar with. So I think when we, when you see the budgets, even when you look at our budget requests this year, you can see how it is also forward-thinking and tying to a lot of our strategic goals.
Thank you.
Ms. Walker?
Thank you for the presentation. One thing I just want to say upfront, I appreciate the repetition that has happened throughout this process. For me, the best way to get a message across is to be iterative and keep saying the same thing multiple ways. So I appreciate that you've revisited the process every time. I think that's been really helpful. I'm also encouraged that you reached out to the Amy Webb's team, because I frankly, I was really impressed that you guys did this without outside consultants. I know it's often easy to say, oh, we need someone to help us do this, but I'm impressed that you guys did this as an administrative team with the collaboration of the educators, too. And it'll be interesting to see what her team has to say, but I've been really impressed with the quality of the report. A couple of questions. On the table, it's not on your presentation, but it was in our packet, there's a table of strategic outcomes, I believe? Yeah. If you could just explain the way that the X's correspond to the years, I'm assuming when there's no, when the task is completed, the X's stop, but that doesn't mean that it's not going to continue to be an ongoing effort. It just means that you've achieved what you set out to do.
Correct.
For the, okay.
Yeah.
And then you mentioned that we'll do annual updates, and you had that in your tactical steps. I guess my question is, when would those typically happen? Or what are your thoughts on when those should typically happen? And is an annual update enough? Or should we be doing it maybe?
No, I agree. I think part of this and part of the work that we've done in really looking at how, you know, Amy Webb's team designs updates for different organizations, I think it would be, I would probably say like three times a year. So you'd probably want to do it in the beginning of the year, really talk about the district goals, where we want to go. And then a mid-year, talk about where we're at, and then the end of the year of what has been accomplished. And I also think what I really like about that, too, is it ties into our budget process. So if we're giving an update, let's say in January, of where the district is, and we're also presenting budget information, you'll hopefully see how that's tying where we need to go. But I think that's one piece, and that's also the feedback that we received when we did the SCOG analysis. So some of the challenges and opportunities, I think a lot of people didn't know how much we have already accomplished. So when we got to bring in the focus groups, that was some feedback that we received, like when they said, you know, this would be great if you could do updates. So that's kind of where we also got the idea, is that we should be updating, you know, the community on some of the great accomplishments that's happening.
I like that. That makes a lot of sense. I was just looking at that chart you were referencing, strategic outcomes, and then right below it is strategic investments. And maybe next year, we'll get to a point where that's all, you know, all on one.
Correct.
You know, one slide of information, so we can really be making those connections as we plan. I love that. Were there other questions, comments? Mr. Cole?
Thank you. And I agree. I really liked the presentation. I especially liked the fact that when I attended your speech to the teachers back in September, you basically talked about that we're going to get started with tactics and strategies. So it's obviously, it's part of the Coen model to continue that, and it really makes sense. The question I had was related to, I guess, measurement of outcomes. Years ago, I used to have a lot of experience with strategic plans, and I really like this one. It's very, I think it's, you know, the district is behind it, it's working. And in the course of learning about strategic plans, I also found out there are some that when you hit something that you don't have the resources to achieve, things get wordy, and it's not well-measured. And, you know, I want us to stay away from that. So I guess in terms of reviewing the plans, the strategic plan, will there be opportunities to like report out on, you know, outcomes and measurements?
I think that's part from working with the team. A lot of our goals that we set, as I said, you know, from the district all the way down, needs to be measurable, so we can see how we're doing. So that's, I agree with you. If you have goals and all of that, but no one's really measuring it, it's not going to move your district forward.
Sure.
So for us, what we're encouraged to do is that on the tactical side, we use that word tactical, but that's the educators on a daily basis. And like, if you look at like the literacy plan, for example, there's going to be a lot of data that we're utilizing, and from the purchases, from a lot of the programming that we're doing right now, that going into next year, that's going to be a measurable outcome that you'll see. Is this working and kind of, you know, where we need to make those improvements? But I think for our team, as we were developing this and receiving a lot of feedback, we want to make sure that our goals are measurable. And if we're not achieving where we need that our goals are measurable. And if we're not achieving where we need to, then we need to change the tactics. So that's kind of, we want this to be a living document and not say we have a strategic plan for five years, 80 pages sitting on a shelf. So we want this to be a living, breathing document that our educators, from all of us, from the top all the way down, has some focus goals to achieve each year.
Thank you.
Great.
Mr. Menon?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of follow up a little bit on what Mr. Cole had to say and to talk a little bit about being really clear about what our measurements are going to be, what we're going to be using to measure. Because as you know, from the budget process, we will very often get asked, so, you know, how, I want you to make us the best school district you can make us. And we don't define what that is, or they don't define what that is. They just say, just make it happen. And often it turns out to be where we get ranked in a magazine based on demographic factors. So the importance of being really clear about what we're measuring and why we're using that measurement as, as strategy, I think is really, really important. And will really, I think, help inform both the community and the budget process and the other stakeholders in the budget process, city council, other folks.
Exactly. And I think, you know, working with the team, th- those are the type of measurements. Like when we're talking, for example, with a lot of the work we've done with social-emotional learning, you know, what's the measurement going to be to see that? And we do have some data points that we can utilize, like with our Swiss data and how, how often students are getting counseling. And we hopefully would see a reduction with a lot of that work. But I think for the, for the team that we have back there, as we are developing these outcomes, we want to make sure that they're measurable and how we're going to do it. Absolutely.
Great. Anyone else? So we have a school budget update. Do you want to stay up there? Would you like to sit down?
I can stay up there.
I just want to be mindful of how you're feeling today.
Yeah. All right. Awesome. Well, thank you all. I just want to, once again, thank the school committee because you were our first pilot on that first focus group in the summer. And we, your feedback really encouraged us to continue to move forward with this process. Because we really didn't know, as Ms. Walker said, we really wanted to do things differently in the sense of, of the lessons we learned through COVID. And I think we need to be flexible and have the ability to adapt and to change. So I think that's been a strength of Newburyport. I just want to, I just have a few slides. It's not a big presentation by any means. But just to kind of go over, bless you out there, to go over some budget revisions and kind of just show where we, where we're at right now. So this is a, some changes that we've made since April 26th. So the city appropriation with some of our revisions is a 5% change. And then, just quickly, so then the total, I think it's a, with the 5%, it's a $360,000 reduction from the requests that, that we've had. But as you'll see, when I go through these slides, we're still very excited about moving the district forward. And we prioritize some things for this year and we prioritize some things for next year. So you'll see a lot of these positions also reoccurring in next year's budget. So the budget, our budget right now still continues to move our public schools forward, and we're really excited about that. So as you all know, and, and we've been through a lot of the budget presentations, the first investment is in our special education and to build our in-house specialized programming. And this still allows us to keep our students who need the specialized programming in district and also enhances our instructional approaches for all, teaching all students with a lot of the professional development that's still in our budget. I think this is also, with a lot of the changes, I just really want to thank our school committee in the sense of making sure in my first few years here that this was a priority of the school committee. And I'm just, you know, proud that we have going into next year tuition-free kindergarten. That doesn't always happen in a lot of districts. And I just want to thank the people that worked hard for that and keeping that on our radar to make that happen. So we're really excited, excited for that and it's accessible for every family. This budget also, investments in staff through the negotiated contract settlements and expanded the human resource department that allows us to recruit and retain excellent faculty and support staff. The other piece of this budget, also investments in staffing allow us to expand our social-emotional programming, address the changing needs for all of our school-aged children. So that's all those programs that we talked about, our advisory, our wellness, counseling programs. And also goes right back to the portrait of a graduate to tie in to that for the wellness skills for the future. We still have investments in the arts to allow us to build programs. Every student has access to diverse and enriching music, fine arts, performing arts. We started the conversations with our community stakeholders for music lessons moving into next year. We have, you know, the Breslinian cultural arts teacher that we're excited to have. And then other programming with technology, for example, the arts program, industrial arts downstairs in the high school with working with the NEF to enhance that. And then, as you all know, we've been upgrading for the high school staff next year the technology in every classroom and working with Apple Education and getting some great PD for our faculty. And then exactly kind of what we were talking about just now, Newburyport High School, the instructional technology, the upgrades to that allows students with cutting-edge educational technology and course, courses to prepare them for the changing technological world. And if you all remember, Mr. Sheridan came into school committee last year, the end of the year, and just kind of showed one example how that enhancement is going to change how we deliver an education to the kids. So the tiered budget additions, so these are the additions that throughout the budget process, so if you all remember, first tier changes, we talked about this in depth a few meetings ago. Then we came to a second tier changes in the green. And then our final tier changes are in purple and we're moving, as I said, many of these positions into next year's budget. But as you can see, this is a great budget. We have a lot of support. I think the focus was on special education and in-district programming. And that just kind of gives you a visual of kind of where we started and where we ended up. And, you know, it was, it's been a, a great process and long process, but I think where, where we need to be. And then Ms. Walker brought this up, which I thought was a great point. We just did the city appropriations, and I think it was on the 26th that Ms. Walker said, you know, remember, although we're asking, you know, for more for the school budget, remember these years when a lot of things were cut. This is where world language is cut, your performing arts were cut. All this programming was cut. And so now we're in this area where we're trying to bring a lot of those things back. So, and I thought that was a great point that was brought up on the 26th. So as I said, this budget, we are moving in the right direction. We're getting a lot of support where we need it. And then some of those key positions that we feel we can wait a year, and you'll probably see those resurface in next year's budget. So we're really comfortable with this budget as it is. And that's just kind of the overview, quick little overview once again. Yes?
The previous page, I just want to make sure that I'm reading correctly. So whatever doesn't have a box around it is currently funded in the budget?
Correct.
Okay. And then the rest of these will get added in over the next several years?
Well, hopefully not several years.
Maybe next year.
Right.
Could even be this year.
Possible.
Okay, great.
Yes, so that's, that just kind of goes through, and, and you've heard me explain a lot of these over the past few months. But those are the three tiers of where we're at.
Ms. Walker?
Thank you. Just, I just want to, for the benefit of those who might be watching from the public, and I, I'm assuming you may include this explanation in your presentation to city council. That's up to you, obviously. But, you know, we did pass at our last meeting a 6% increase. So what you're presenting tonight is reflective of the mayor's budget, which actually was presented to city council with 1% less than what we approved. And so the mayor, per process, has asked you to present a reduced overall budget, a request, and highlight what that would mean. And I think you did that tonight. But I just want to make sure the community understands that the school committee actually passed a higher budget that included some of these tiers that were then taken out to, to reach that 1% reduction. I would suggest, following on Mr. Menon's question, that when you do present these to the council, that you explain what the tiers mean because we, we went through this process with you, but it almost looks like you're presenting additions versus subtractions. So I would just explain, you know, that this is our, this was our strategic goal, right? We were overall, these were our expectations and hopes.
Correct.
And through the process of discussions and prioritizing, each tier reflected a reduction of some of our strategic goals. And, and ultimately, the result was, was not highlighted. I would just, I think that's a good expl, that's, that's an important point to explain in a public format.
Thank you.
Well, I think if you look at the talk, it says additions, and it's not additions, you know?
Exactly. Yeah, so I think, again, we were all part of this presentation, so I just, but when this goes, every time I look at this, I think, oh, wait, did we add those or subtract them? So I think just being more clear on that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Just adding on to that, I think it would be helpful to prioritize things that we would want to add on if we could, right? Because sometimes, to your point, Mr. Menon, there is some additional funding. Personally, I'd love to see the health services admin get funded when I think about the, the work and just the way, the work of nurse, school nursing has been transformed and will continue to be. Having that admin support would really mean a lot to support our nursing staff. So that, that would be my pick. I'm sure we could make a case for all of these things, but it would be helpful to have some prioritized so that we're, we're ready. It would be nice to be ready if there's some extra funds. Yes?
Just following on that suggestion, I wonder if, because we never really did, as a school committee, go through a prioritization process, although I know some of these decisions are not necessarily ours to make, we can advise. But I, I wonder if it's better to just show them all as, as one category? These are the things that we, you know, like rather than splitting into three tiers, I mean, ultimately, those are the things that aren't in our budget. Or that, that we can't fund right now. I wonder if it's a, a possible option just to, for the simplicity of the council presentation, to just group them all into one?
And, and this, we were just taking the, the aspirational, which then turned to strategic, but this is where we started and so you all, I, I see your point. You all understand this because you've been through all these budget meetings. But for someone that's new to the table, they may not understand. So, yeah, we can definitely present that a little bit different.
And they may get caught up in, some minds may get caught up in the tiers and start to hand, to pick out things and, you know, that's just sometimes how these budget discussions go. So maybe it's better to just separate out the two.
Two categories, things that are being funded, things that aren't, right?
Or just put a line through them.
Or just put a line. That's a good.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I, you know, again, to follow on what everybody is saying, you know, in the presentation of this budget, particularly the city council, this is our strategic budget. This budget aligns with the strategic plan. You want to know where we're going, here's where we're going, and this is how we're going to get there. And, you know, it's just, it's pretty simple, I think. But, but it is very much tied to the strategic plan that you presented tonight. And that's fine. For years, they've been asking, where, how are we going, what are we doing? We've got all the information. It's right there. Now it's just a matter of getting it funded.
And you're going to measure and show the outcomes, so you can't ask for much more than that.
Right.
Anything? Mr. Callahan?
Thanks, Superintendent. When the mayor called me to break the bad news that, you know, he was going to ask, ask for a reduction, my response was, well, I mean, I don't like that, obviously, but the process worked. You weren't boxed into a number. You got to show us everything you need to move the district forward. I'm going to stop using aspirational and, what did we do?
Strategic.
Strategic or progressive, you know, it's new marketing. You know, but I also want to say that the, I went back and looked, the, the last levy, tax levy increase was 1.4%. You know, it can go to two and a half, which nobody likes and all that stuff. And the only counselor who voted to bring it to its maximum was Counselor Vogel. If they had gone 1.45 instead of 1.4%, we would have had the money. So I'm hoping the mayor, I wish he had been able to be here, will remember that, too. I mean, when he brings up whatever the levy is, proposal is going to be that, you know, this is the stuff that we all went through for months. And it's really not that a lot of money. What did you say, $340,000? In the grand scheme is pennies. So, I mean, I really want to hope to see some of these, like Ms. Hall said, the nurse position. I mean, even the personnel building grounds, maybe DPS can help out, but you can't have one person taking care of all the land, right? And all the other things. So I hope we see these things happen sooner than later, not several years down the line. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so if you take a look, I believe it's at the end of your packet, we have a draft meetings calendar. This, this can go one of two ways. We can just take a look at it.
It can go a lot of different ways.
Bear with me. We can take a look at it, consider this a first reading, vote on it next time, or I can entertain a motion. We can discuss it and pass it tonight. I'm open. Yes?
I think I would have to request that we look at it, take it home, because I've got, you know.
Absolutely.
Are we going to be around in July type of thing? Those types of family conversations.
I'm totally fine with that. Yep.
Yeah. That's my suggestion.
I will just point out my favorite part, which is at the bottom, highlighted meeting dates, times, and/or locations may be changed, added, or deleted throughout the years. And that, that will be the reality.
That covers it pretty broadly.
But yes, check out that summer retreat date, and it's Wednesday, July 27th, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the NHS library. That's what we're proposing. And then the rest of it is just follows our typical first and third Monday with exceptions for holidays and school vacations. So, yep. Any questions about it right now? Okay, so we will vote on this at our next meeting. Thank you. For subcommittee updates, Mr. Callahan, anything for finance?
Pretty much was a superintendent's budget proposal. That was pretty much the whole meeting. We touched on increasing lunch fees, but barely, and we have to talk about that the next one, which is June 16th, I believe. But pretty much it was the budget information that the superintendent gave us.
Okay, and Mr. Menon, anything from joint education?
No, we, we met and discussed the budget. And we were encouraged, we were invited and encouraged to attend the city council budget and finance meeting this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. with a hard stop at 8:00 p.m. And at that point, our budget will be presented. The superintendent will be there, just a little hail, and we'll see where it ends up.
Is that in council chambers, do we know?
It usually is, but I don't know where it is.
Six, not seven o'clock?
Six.
Six o'clock, yes.
Six, yeah.
Probably council chambers.
Probably council chambers, yeah.
Thank you.
That's where they usually have it.
Great. Superintendent's report.
All righty. First of all, before, I guess I have a few things to talk about, but just, we did meet with a parent group nourishing our port schools with our team and Pam Kaylee, kind of look at the lunch program and seeing, you know, what areas that we may be able to improve on. And I know our team, along with the parents, are developing a survey. And I know our team, along with the parents, are developing a survey that will be going out to the district probably the end of this month. So we get some data on that. So that was a positive meeting. The other piece we're talking about is, and I'm sure Vice Chair Hall will talk about, the cultural competency forum that we do have planned on June 6th. Right now, it's 6:30 to 7:45 in the NAC auditorium. And then after that meeting, we'll have our business meeting, school committee business meeting right after that. So we'll have some more details for that for the parents in the upcoming week or so.
Great.
Next is COVID report. As we, as I alluded to earlier in the meeting, as, just like in the state and throughout the schools, cases are going up. Just from last Wednesday to today, we've had 37 students district-wide and 14 staff that are in the COVID protocol. The other piece that is, we're going to be taking a look at is we do have one or two classrooms where there's more than five or six students that have had COVID. And as Vice Chair Hall, our nursing staff, reached out to all of those families and those students and teacher and encouraged them to wear masks coming in until we can, you know, not isolate, you know, that classroom. So that might be something that we may want to be taking a look at when we get a certain percentage of one class. It's more, I think it more impacts elementary school because they're in the same class for five hours a day. So really just reaching out, once we hit over a certain mark of cases within that one class, reach out to the parents and you may have to, you know, mask for that week until the outbreak in that one classroom has subsided. So, parents we reach out to in this scenario, we're very, very thankful to get that call for their children to not have COVID. We also tested all of the students in that classroom and are working with the families, so.
Are you meeting as a health advisory team this Wednesday?
We have not brought in Dr. Sue. It was just myself and Lauren McDonald. But I think with the increased cases, Lauren McDonald also reaches out to Dr. Sue, Mike Gallett, and Dr. Lundergan and goes over these specific scenarios, along with we're required to reach out to DESE when we have this scenario. But we really hadn't had to worry too much about, you know, I guess, the COVID outbreaks until I would say the last couple of weeks with sonacy increases. But I do think it's important when we do have multiple students in one class to reach out to the rest of the families, to notify those parents. We do testing for all of those students. And then those parents that we're working with, we had no problem with having their students mask for the week until, you know, we could figure out, you know, how much this is spreading. So I just think it's something we need to keep on the radar. We may bring the medical advisory team. We'll probably work on a case-to-case basis, like that one scenario with that one classroom is something that we need to address, you know, differently than you would having COVID throughout the, throughout the district, so. The other piece that we're a little concerned with is the staffing. So when we, when you start to, you know, 14, 17, 20 staff members out, it does have an impact. So, you know, we're kind of back in that, making sure we're having coverage and all the classes are supervised, so. But we'll see, you know, hopefully with the warmer weather, the windows are open, most people are outside, we can get to the end of the year, so. But I just wanted to bring that scenario up to everybody, that's what we're dealing with. And then the good news is we, a lot of our school choice, the one grade we're looking to do a lottery in right now is grade 11. I think we have, we're six over the requested slots. Grades eight and nine, I'm looking at right now, we're maybe one student over. And I know in the past, if I touch base with principals and we can have that extra student go in there, it's not going to impact. You've given me the leeway to make that judgment. So I don't believe in the other two grades, it's grades eight and nine with one extra student, that it would have an impact where we would have to do a lottery, but I'll get some more information on that.
All of the slots that we set out are filled?
It's the upper grades, it's the middle school and the high school, those are the ones. The, we did open, if you recall, grades one and two. We still have eight slots remaining in grade one, two slots remaining, I'm sorry, nine slots remaining in grade two. We have five slots remaining in grade six and five slots remaining in grade seven. Grade eight is full, grade nine is full, and grade 11 is where we would have to do a lottery.
Okay.
So.
Is that?
When does that happen?
We'd probably do the lottery, the, it just closed on Friday, the date, so we'll probably be pulling those names probably the end of this week. And then we'll contact those families. And then if whoever gets in and the families who do not get in are on the waiting list, then we'll just go in the order as they were pulled. That's how we typically do it. And I think that's all I have for my superintendent's report. I didn't miss anything.
Ms. Walker, you have a question?
Just on the COVID protocol, is there a, at what point would you consider doing pool testing, if at all? Is, have you guys, is that, is that a pretty cumbersome task to undertake or...
It is, and because we have the, we have plenty of tasks for families.
Right.
So in these scenarios and just working with Lauren McDonald and our nursing team, so we're testing all of those students anyways. But, you know, we still would encourage our families. I think more and more families are requesting tests, the home tests, to test their, you know, test their children. I think that's probably more, if we go down that route, it's a lot easier than a, a pool test is random, so you may not even be testing the right students.
Okay, do we have any new business? I just wanted to announce that we are going to cancel the Tuesday, June 21st, school committee meeting. So I hope no one's too disappointed. That's, if you recall, that's the night, there's a special city council meeting to approve the budget. So it really didn't make sense for us to try to double up, try to get our business finished at our next meeting, which is June 6th. So you can get me any agenda items for that meeting. And then hopefully we'll be all set. In the event that we're not, we can always call a special meeting if there is some item we need to vote on, but... Any questions?
Can I just go back to the COVID, to the superintendent's report?
In terms of transmissibility, is that being quantified with, like, these classes where there seems to be a cluster?
Yeah, I think, I think that's where we pinpointed a possible outbreak in that class, yeah. And I think with, as we know, with this new variant, it may not be as, like, strong in your, it's a lot, it's a lot more transferable.
Yeah, so, so I assume there would be protocol for students that test positive, their families maybe oversee that, and then as a, as, you know, Nurse McDonald can kind of keep track of whether those numbers go up or down, okay?
Correct, and the other piece for, in that scenario, the nursing staff contacted all the parents. So all of those parents wanted all of their children tested. So we did that testing to assist the family, so the parents didn't have to. So it's, it was, it just really, it was a collaborative effort in that scenario. But, you know, once we have one like that, I mean, we just got to be prepared if, you know, if there's another class where you start seeing three or four students in that same class. You know, we want to make sure that, you know, we have a protocol in place where we can call the parents and then that class may have to mask. You know, like myself, I'm back, but, you know, following protocols, I'm going to mask for the, this week. But similar to what the students and families, so. Yeah, it's something that, you know, where, as they always say, we're not out of this. We're hoping we can, you know, mitigate it to the end of the school year. We got a few weeks left, so fingers crossed.
Hang in there.
Exactly.
Any other new business?
Just a follow-up question. So can you just clarify what the cultural competency forum is and when it will be and where?
Yes. So I think our official title at this point, maybe Ms. Furlong can help me, but it's Culturally Responsive Teaching and Learning Community Forum. Yes, thank you. And so that will be on Monday, June 6th, at 6:30 in the NAC auditorium. 7:45 is not a hard stop, but, you know, when we're hoping to wrap things up. There will be an email going out to families with a Google form so they can ask questions that they want to see, if they want to, anything they want to see or questions they want clarified. And it'll be an expansion of the presentation we got at our last meeting from the superintendent about the work around culturally responsive teaching and learning, which is identity and how we treat each other and ensuring that everyone feels included, that everyone belongs in our school system. And in addition to a brief, we're talking brief introduction from the superintendent, we will have focused presentations from each school with, I believe, administrators and teachers talking about what that work looks like specifically at their grade levels.
That's great, great example.
Okay, does that, does that answer everything?
Yeah, and so I assume, because that's our regularly scheduled business, school committee business meeting, so we'll follow the forum with our regular...
So yes, we're hoping to begin at 8:00. That's the goal.
Yep.
Any other new business, questions? Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.